Alrighty, just so everybody's aware, we are now live streaming to YouTube.
Hey Sean, I see we have two of our planners as attendees. Could we promote them to panelist?
Absolutely, I was just gonna ask about that, actually.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome, it is done.
Awesome.
I see the Scotsman is here. Good trip Jacob.
It was really, really wonderful, actually.
That's good.
The hike, the scenery was amazing. So it was... Yeah, I definitely and definitely last week, like coming back to the office, like oof, this is getting back into real life. Takes taken me a couple of days to get to get back at it, so. But it needs to be back. We got a lot of really great stuff ahead of us, and so I'm excited for a lot of the projects that we're working on, so.
Good. Hope you take up, you took a lot of pictures, I hope.
Oh, yes, I did, a ton, so.
But do we have six o'clock yet?
Five fifty-nine still.
Are you all seeing the PowerPoint again?
I don't see it, not yet.
Okay, it says I'm sharing.
Mine, mine says you're starting to share.
Ah, there we go.
Okay, I got a notification that there was some network issues on my end, so. Hopefully, that's resolved.
If you, in that case Abby, if you need to keep your camera off that frequently, at least is helpful.
I have absolutely no idea if it's on right now or not.
No, well, you're not showing, so.
For some reason, I do not see the PowerPoint on my screen. I don't know if anyone else is having that same problem.
Because I see it. It says Planning Commission Executive Meeting will begin soon.
I do not see it.
I do not see it either.
Maybe Abby, when you have a sec, could you?
Try again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's weird that I see it.
It also looks like Susanna and Chris are currently panelists in the chat. Or sorry, attendees, my bad, sorry. There we go.
Is anyone seeing it now?
No.
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 It says I'm sharing.
Now we see it.
Now we see it. I see it.
Yeah, I do too. Abby, would you just like go to the next slide and let's see how quickly it's responsive? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we see it. It's scrolling through, although I'd say there's probably a small amount of lag, but.
I do not see it. I'm gonna jump out and get back in.
Okay. Man, you'd think like five years after the pandemic, all this technology would have just been amazingly figured out.
I am also gonna hop out real quick, because I'm having issues seeing it as well.
Okay.
I am as well.
Should we give the, like presenter ability to somebody else? And see if that, you know, works better?
I don't, and another thing that made, I don't know whether it's truly helpful or not, is. I, and I don't know whether it's because this building has some internet struggles on a regular basis. Whether if staff, maybe if we all turned our cameras off, because that takes a, if you're here at forty-one. See if that makes any sorts of improvements, so that we're using less bandwidth here at the, here at the building.
Yeah, I still don't see anything. Let me try my phone, see what happens.
Like I could also try sharing, I don't know if, if that would change anything.
You can try.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up right now, so. Just gonna open a read-only copy. Can everyone see this?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I only see it on my phone. I only see it on my phone, so I'm gonna jump off of there here, get on.
Okay, this view look correct to everyone where it's full-screen slide?
Well, I see like the, um. The slide bar, I can see, I can see the upcoming slides.
Slide deck on the left side, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that better?
Hmm.
It's still the same.
Still the same.
And I, I don't see anything yet. I'm not sure if anyone else is experiencing.
So interesting.
I still have, I have nothing.
This is so.
I'm seeing, I can see what you have presented there.
I do see it on my phone now.
So interesting. Um, Sean, do you have any clue as to what would be causing this?
No, I'm actually sitting here dumbfounded as well. I was thinking it was Abby's computer when she was trying to share. It seems like she was having a little bit more network issues than everybody else, but if everybody still have an issue seeing your stream, then I'm very confused. I can see it and everything, it's the, I can see the slideshow on the left. I don't know what to do to try to fix it, though.
Well, I, I see it as well. This is Erveta. I can see it also in the slide deck on the left.
Are there any commissioners who cannot see it?
Todd, can you see it now?
I can see it on my phone, just not on my laptop, so I'm on my phone.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you Chris? Christopher? Sandy? Paula?
I'm good.
I can see it.
I can see it.
But she needs to click run slideshow, because right now I still see the, the deck on the left.
Right.
Yeah.
I see it.
Yeah, I think, okay, I'm gonna hit run slideshow one more time, and if. Are you seeing the right view where it's just the slide? Are you also seeing like the next slide kinda teed up?
We're seeing it, the next slide.
Yeah, we're seeing the deck.
And then I think. I think it's better than if we just have it like this, if that's okay with everyone.
Yeah, it's suboptimal, and I apologize commissioners, I, I just flat out don't know what the technology issue is going on here, so.
Make it more interesting. I keep getting the Cisco web meetings, join on your webinar, keep popping up on my laptop. So I've killed about ten of them, they keep coming up, so it's, it's just acting crazy today.
Okay, are we ready?
Um, mine, sorry commissioners, my computer is not working at all, so I am gonna go into Ben's office. Feel free to start, but then I have the first presentation, so I will be in there in just a second.
Okay, thanks Susanna. And Sean, if you'll sort of report back on this to IT about these issues.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll be in the office tomorrow, so maybe I can, I don't, I really don't know where to begin with this besides some sort of network issue going on within that building right now, but it's definitely odd.
Alright.
Mary, would it give you an option to, I know sometimes you can share different screens, is it somehow going to a different screen on your computer? And that you need to share a different screen?
Um, well, I can do like share the screen overall. I did choose to share a window, so maybe I can just try that real quick. Entire screen. Is that better?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this is the appropriate, appropriate view, love it. Okay. I'm just, never mind, it was me. I was just seeing black, but I'm good now. Okay, awesome. Alright, then, uh, are we ready to call the meeting to order?
Ready to call the meeting. Is everybody in, in view the screen here, I hope?
Yes.
Yep.
Alright, like to call this, uh, Planning Commission Executive Meeting, October sixth, twenty twenty-five, six PM, uh, to order. Can we take roll, please?
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Right.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Okay. Everybody's had a chance to read the minutes. I'm just gonna do, like to, uh. Ask you if you've had a chance to read the minutes, is there any corrections or objections on the minutes of the public hearing of August eleventh, twenty twenty-five? No? Okay, if not, I have a motion for approval of those minutes? Motion to approve the minutes? And there's been a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have that, and then we also have the minutes of the executive meeting of September eighth, twenty twenty-five. So everybody had a chance to read those minutes, and if so, uh, is there any objections or corrections to the minutes? If not, I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve?
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Nays? Ayes have it, very much. Now we have a res- resolution, Community Planning Month.
I have that and can read it. Whereas, long-range planning provides a vision for the future that is based in the hopes, desires, and aspirations of the people who call the community home. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, by looking at where we are now, where we've come from, and where our residents are telling us they want to be over the next generation. St. Louis County has created a roadmap to a future of growth and prosperity. And whereas, through extensive engagement and civic dialogue, St. Louis County twenty fifty, an equitable and sustainable comprehensive plan. Is the community's plan serving as a blueprint, blueprint for future collective action as we work toward our shared goals. And whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas, American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to every community. And how planners are uniquely positioned to identify solutions to communities' most difficult housing, transportation, and land use questions. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation. And dedication of the members of the St. Louis County Department of Planning. Who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of St. Louis County. And whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of St. Louis County. Of the, of St. Louis County Department of Planning. And extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. And now, therefore, be it resolved that by the Planning Commission of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. The Planning Commission, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month, hereby recognizes the month of October twenty twenty-five as Community Planning Month in St. Louis County.
I believe I need a motion of approval for the resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it, very good. Wonderful, that's a great resolution. I hope we can follow through with everything that you have in that resolution. Great. Anybody have any comments about the resolution? How about you Jacob?
I just wanna say that the County Council also passed a very similar resolution at their meeting last week. And one of the key differences between the resolution that you just passed tonight and the one from a week ago. Is that it also explicitly thanks the Planning Commission for the work that you all do. So the, the resolution from the County Council also actively calls out the hard work and dedication of our commissioners, and I really wanna say. From the staff's perspective, that we really appreciate having such a excellent group of community leaders and community planners to be working with on this commission, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank all the planners. Okay, on to new business. We have PC twenty-eight dash twenty-five UG Commissary LLC.
I think we have one more resolution to address before we move on to new business.
Okay.
This slide is out of date, Mary, sorry. That is in the correspondence section. Oh, okay, gotcha, so we can move on. Mm-hmm. Okay, great.
Alright, this is PC twenty-eight dash twenty-five UG Commissary LLC. Um, this is a request for a conditional use permit in the R four for the purpose of a not-for-profit club and community center. On a point three-five acre tract located on the west side of Laramore Road, northwest of the intersection of Laramore Road and Cove Lane. You see on the left that the site is in far north county, and on the right you see the parcel itself outlined in red. Here is a larger view of the parcel outlined in red, noting, uh, Laramore Park across the street. So this request is for a conditional use permit in the R four for the purpose of a community center, because that, uh, community center is not a permitted use by right in the R four. The preliminary site development plan shows no changes to the building exterior, and parking is shown in the front and back of the building. We recommend approval for this request. The use is not detrimental to the surrounding permitted uses, because a community center is a reasonable conditional use. The petitioner is not proposing any external site changes to accommodate the community center, so it will be operated in a manner that is visually compatible. A community center like this benefits residents of all types, nonprofits, and businesses, which is desirable to promote the general welfare of St. Louis County and its residents. And finally, it is consistent with good planning practice to have this type of site on a parcel surrounded by residences that will utilize the center. As for recommended site plan revisions, the department recommends the petitioner install a bike rack on the property for youth or other residents that might bike to the property instead of drive. And the department notes that the four parking spaces fronting Laramore Road do not meet the setback requirements. Instead, the department recommends an alternative parking plan to meet the parking requirements. And at this time, I would like to request a motion.
Hey, you've heard the recommendation for approval by the department. Do I have a motion for approval? Motion to approve? Is there a second? There was a second, Paula. Um, are there any questions regarding this? Please?
Yes, there are questions, this is Erveta, um, parking. So the alternative parking, what are some of their options, or have you had that discussion with them?
Yes, we have spoken about a number of options, including, um, credit for street parking on Cove Lane. But also in addition, the use of several informal parking, uh, cross-access with other businesses in the area. So it is part of the, um, it will be part of the site plan review process that we fully flush out the alternative parking plan, but we have talked through some of those options.
Because when I pulled up the property and I drove past it, um, if I remember correctly, there's a house next door. I don't, I don't recall a business being next door for cross-access. It's, it's on a corner, but it's in a residential neighborhood. The Laramore is a street with no, unfortunately, no sidewalks. And, and students are walking up and down that street a lot, um, when they get out of school, so it's just some, some really interesting dynamics going on. So I just heard you say cross-access, and sometimes when I hear cross-access, that normally means cross-access between businesses. But if I recall correctly, there is a house that's right next door to that.
There is, yes. Um, the petitioner at public hearing also mentioned the use of their already set-up transportation plan. So that is involved in the alternative parking plan as well. They do, in their current programming, already own two vehicles in which they transport, uh, residents. So that is part of the alternative transportation plan as well, is that they, the, the building itself has two vehicles that can transport large numbers of people. So the, the parking plan itself is not set in stone right now. It will be a part of the site development plan process. Making sure that they can meet those parking requirements safely.
And will the site development plan be reviewed administratively, or is this something that comes before the planning commission?
That will be reviewed administratively.
By the department.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay.
I do have a question. Looking at that, was, was there already sidewalks in front of the, the firehouse?
No, there are no sidewalks on Laramore or Cove at all.
No.
They are not present on the street anywhere close to the development.
No, it, and if, it, you know, when I drove past, school happened to had a, a jurn, and it, it just, it felt unsafe for me as a driver. Driving down that street with all of those kids walking up and down the street, so, I mean, that's a. I don't know, you know, that's a, a school district and a St. Louis County issue, I think that needs to be addressed. In addition to, you know, we're looking at this petition, but that's a whole other thing is, uh, because kids are playing around, they're elementary age kids, they're, they're playing around. They're kind of bumping out into the street, and, and so, um, it's just some, some interesting dynamics happening.
One of the things to, that I think I would encourage us to maybe, um, think about on this is as the department. And the commission next year moves into working on the Spanish Lake Small Area Study, this is one of, this is an issue that I think could be brought up in that study. To look at the safety of, of children on Laramore, because this road is well, well within, um, the limits of that study area. And the study is broad enough to look at a whole host of issues, including that, so I, I appreciate you bringing that up, Commissioner. Because I think it is a, I think it's something that can be, uh, addressed in that, in that plan.
Yes. Yes. Um, okay, that's, that's all I have for now.
Alright, any, any other questions? Alright, if not, we had a first and a second on the motion for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it, seven, zero. And next we have PC twenty-nine dash twenty-five Monarch Meadows Retreat LLC.
Good evening commissioners, uh, this is PC twenty-nine dash twenty-five Monarch Meadows Retreat LLC. Uh, it is a request for a CUP in the R two for the purpose of a retreat center with dormitory on a five-point-six acre tract. That is located south of North Highway sixty-seven, east of the eastern terminus of Te Court. Uh, here you'll see it on the far north St. Louis County, and then on the right it's outlined in red. Here's a larger aerial shot. Uh, retreats owned and operated by religious educational or other not-for-profit establishments are not a permitted use by right in the R two residence district. But are allowed as a conditional use permit, uh, hence the request. The preliminary site development plan, uh, they plan on using the existing structures in place, as is, uh, they want to plant a native wildflower meadow. Uh, they are proposing no new parking using the seventy-seven existing parking spaces on the lot. And at this time, the department has no recommendations of revisions for the site plan. Uh, we are recommending approval. The use is not detrimental to the surrounding permitted uses, because the retreat center and dormitory is a reasonable conditional use. The petitioner is not proposing any site changes to accommodate the retreat center and dormitory, so it will be operated in a manner that is visually compatible. A retreat center and dormitory like this benefits small businesses, which is desirable to promote the general welfare of St. to promote the general welfare of St. Louis County residents. Finally, it is consistent with good planning practice to cite this type of use on a parcel surrounded by similar institutional uses. At this time, I move for motion.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the department for approval. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, been a first and a second. Are there any questions about this recommendation? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Ayes? Eyes have it, seven, zero. And next, we have some old business. I, I skipped a spot, sorry about that. PC thirty-dash twenty-five Lace Park Properties LLC.
Perfect, thank you, Keith. Yes, as stated, this is PC thirty-dash twenty-five Lace Park Properties LLC. The request is for an R, to go from an R two to an M three for the proposed use of a nursery slash contractor storage yard. The tract size is seven-point-eight-nine acres and the location is east of Lindbergh Boulevard, west of Half Moon Drive and approximately nine-hundred-and-fifty feet southwest of Midland Boulevard. Here you can see the site outlined in red in the aerial, as you'll notice that it's currently two different plots that will be merged together. Otherwise, if you look to the left, you'll see that where it is located currently in the county. And here's another copy of that aerial outlined in red. The request is to amend the existing zoning of an R two residential property to M three planned industrial to allow a plant nursery and contractor storage yard. The subject property is currently undeveloped and the applicant has stated they plan to redevelop sections of the property with customer parking, large storage buildings, a nursery office and showroom and a proposed detention area. The applicant has proposed constructing multiple new buildings and parking areas on previously undeveloped land. Extensive landscaping is planned both to help screen the site as well as promote nursery business. This will be conducted across about three different phases. The first phase is planned to be the two general parking areas found kind of towards the beginning of the site from the entranceway, as well as the detention pond, followed by them adding in the buildings there, that showroom that'll be going towards the front of the site as well and some of their storage in the back. Now, all landscaping proposal will be done in that phase one of the project, though. We did ask the applicant to submit a copy of kind of what they thought that the roadway would look like from the, from Link Road, traveling along there. This is not a current structure that is on-site. They basically just photoshopped a copy of what they think that showroom will look like from the roadway. So, that is just taking the current Google image from the street view that I think was updated last April and just placing that building on there in the background. Currently, we are recommending approval. We feel that a plant nursery and contractor storage yard would be an appropriate use of the site with the current undeveloped nature and how the low level of impact to the surrounding uses and property. The proposed site improvements will improve the aesthetics and safety of the site through the development of new parking area landscaping and those proposed structures. And at this time, I would like to make a, or recommend a motion.
Hey, you've heard the recommendation of the department for approval. Do I have a motion for approval?
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, there's been a first and a second. Are there any questions about this, this project? I know there was some people that were concerned about the, 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 the road and the traffic and, and thought it was somewhat dangerous. And, and I do have a question in regards, is there going to be a sidewalk that's going to be entertained or that, that they're going to put in around this, this roadway?
Not that it's been proposed at this time. I know that, that might be something that it's discussed as we move on into the site plan review further on with the project. But at this time, the applicant has not proposed any sidewalk in the area and not currently discussed it.
Well, let me, so, i- if this would have stayed as R two and, and a neighborhood was developed here, that probably would have had to have a sidewalk go all the way around that roadway, wouldn't it? Would that be about right, Jacob?
That is correct, Mr. Taylor. So, future, the development of this site will require a, a sidewalk. While the applicant may not have shown it on their, on their site development plan, new development of this scope and scale will require either A, the, the placement of a sidewalk currently, or the escrowing of the monies for a future sidewalk to be put in. So, during the site development plan, or excuse me, during the permitting process, a sidewalk, there's somehow a, a provision for sidewalks will be addressed.
And, and, and the other question was when they, when you showed the, the two plots that were there, along the roadway, there's that one section, is that all right-of-way of the, of the county?
Yes, it, yes, it is. And I believe that was where the, the applicant had stated they are hoping to get in tou- touch with Transportation and Public Works to potentially clean up that area.
So, what they would do or what, what a property owner could do is request for a partial vacation of that property and, and that property would then be disposed of by St. Louis County. There is a process and a procedure that is managed by our Department of Transportation Public Works that ultimately would be conducted by the county council, who has the ultimate authority on, on the disposition or in disposing of right-of-way through a vacation process. But that is the process that the property owner would have to request that, that vacation to, for the county to relinquish that.
I thought you remembered from the survey that that was actually MODOT right-of-way and not counties?
If that is the case, and there still is that, there is a procedure by which they could, they could similarly with MODOT, although that is a more difficult proposition typically.
Yeah, that's what I was, I think I'd asked them at that time during the public hearing about it, and I'm pretty sure it's MODOT right-of-way, so it might be a slightly harder endeavor to get through. Okay, thanks.
So, my, my question is, do we know the speed on the road? Limit speed, limit, speed limit?
No.
Going past there, because, you know, it was, it was definitely some concern about traffic and speed and safety from the public hearing, as I recall.
I apologize, I do not have that information.
I was gonna say, I can see real quick. And to clarify, Lindbergh is MODOT right-of-way. I believe in Link is county right-of-way.
It looks like the survey says the right-of-way was conveyed to the state of Missouri and it has a deed book and page number to the state.
Okay. And no, I do not have the, the speed limit on Link readily available. Sorry about that.
What I'm looking, I'm looking at Google Street View. It looks like there's a thirty-five mile-per-hour speed limit sign on Link up near the Midland intersection. So, if I travel down the road, if that's the only posted sign, then that's going to be the, the limit for that entire. Yeah, it appears, it appears that the only sign is a thirty-five mile-per-hour sign.
Any other questions? Okay. We've had a motion and a second on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Eyes have it, seven to zero. Now, we can move on to old business. PC zero-five, where are we at here? PC zero-five dash twenty-five, St. Louis County Planning Commission.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. This was a request for amendments to Chapter one-zero-zero-three zoning ordinance pertaining to window lighting and signage, commercial vehicle parking, home occupations, legal non-conforming uses, architectural review, landscape escrows, telecommunications towers and other items that may need clarification. For background, the commission may recall that county council adopted two resolutions in December twenty-twenty-four directing the commission to hold a public hearing to consider amendments to two sections of the zoning ordinance. The first resolution was regarding window lighting and signage in commercial districts and the second was regarding commercial vehicle parking, particularly in residential areas. So, the planning commission adopted Resolution oh-one-twenty-twenty-five in January of this year to consider those items and a handful of items that the department had identified as areas where some amendments could be appropriate. So, those additional areas were home occupations, legal non-conforming uses, architectural review, landscape escrows, telecommunication towers and then other items that may need clarification. So, since that, adopting that resolution and hearing this request at public hearing in March of this year, the department has been reviewing some peer county ordinances and other kind of general planning guidance to determine best practices and recommend some ordinance amendments. So, I'm gonna go through all of those recommended amendments, just section by section. There'll be a, you know, place for questions at the end, but if you have a question on any particular slide, please feel free to stop me, so I can just answer it in the moment. So, the first section we're gonna look at is window lighting. Currently, the zoning ordinance does not have any specific regulations about window lighting in commercial districts beyond a provision allowing properties to have seasonal temporary light displays. However, window strip lighting is used throughout commercial districts, particularly in multi-tenant retail development, and it can be a nuisance to neighbors and passersby, especially when business owners or property owners use flickering or flashing window lighting. So, after looking at other ordinances, we have the following recommended amendments. We recommend adding the following regulations to the lighting section of the zoning ordinance. First, decorative lighting used to accentuate or trim windows or doors or to outline borders or windows of, uh, excuse me, or to outline borders of windows or doors is prohibited on sites occupied by non-residential uses. And neon window signs shall be permitted on sites occupied by non-residential uses as regulated under Section one-zero-zero-three-one-six-eight, which is the sign section of the zoning ordinance. We're also recommending adoption, adopting a definition of decorative lighting and the proposed language we have is lighting fixture, lighting fixtures intended to add to the aesthetic appeal of a property, accent landscaping or as architectural features. This term shall include, but is not limited to string lights, strip lights and tape lights. Are there any questions on this section?
So, what does that mean that businesses can't have Christmas lights?
No, it specifically does not prohibit season, temporary seasonal lighting displays, which are permitted by right in the lighting section. This would prohibit permanent lights around windows. Permanent strip lighting.
Okay, permanent.
Okay. We can go on and if any other questions come up, we, we can address them at the end. The next section we looked at was window signage. So, currently, the zoning ordinance states that the outline area of window signs shall occupy no more than fifty percent of the outline area of any window and that window signs located inside the window and not greater than ten square feet in outline area and less than fifty percent of the window area do not require permits. What we found is that this allowance is greater than the size allowed in a lot of other counties. So, we are recommending reducing that to allow, to state that the outline area of any window sign shall be no more than twenty-five percent of the outline area of any window and noting that neon business signs shall be considered a window, a permanent window sign and included in that twenty-five percent limitation. And then, we're kind of updating this provision for signs for which no permits are required accordingly. So, instead of less than fifty percent of the window area, it's window signs located inside the window and not greater than ten square feet in outline area and less than twenty-five percent of the window area. So, window signs are already allowed in commercial district, in commercial districts and industrial districts. This is reducing the size of those window signs that are permitted.
Is there a definition somewhere of how to calculate those signs? I can, I can see people trying to get tiny little square footage of each of their words as they line them up along the bottom of the window, the top of the window and something in the middle, so that they can try to meet the twenty-five percent, but yet they're really covering the whole window. So, is there some sort of, like, that the box goes around all text and it includes negative space between it or is there anything that helps to ca- to say how that signage percentage is calculated?
The zoning ordinance does have an explanation of how it's calculated. I can read it if you want. It's long.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure there was something in there, because I, I didn't, I didn't get closer. I, I went down and saw what was highlighted and underlined, but I hadn't like delved deeper into it. Just wanted to make sure that was in there.
Yes, that, that, those instructions are in the zoning ordinance and we're not recommending any changes to how we calculate sign area, so it wouldn't change that at all.
Thank you.
And then, to build on that, what you're describing, Mara, would not be an appropriate way of calculating sign area based on how the zoning ordinance lays that out currently. So, they wouldn't be able to calculate the sign of each individual letter and add that up to get a larger amount of signage.
Awesome, thank you.
I have a question regarding the, the term neon signs. Is that somewhat an outdated? Or in the future, near future, could it be an outdated term that I feel like there's replacement types of quote-unquote neon signs?
You know what, it's possible. This is a phrase that I found in the zoning ordinances that I had been looking at, some of which had been adopted within the last five years or so. If it is the commission's will, we can look at a kind of alternate way of phrasing that at this time or in the future as we kind of, as we consider more holistic zoning ordinance updates.
Well, and that's a good place, I think, for me to, to jump in, which is to, to tell the commission that we don't expect right now with the, with our current zoning ordinance for us to do any more big updates like this in the future because really, we're at the point of, of, of looking at a holistic rewrite of the zoning ordinance in general. So, that is part of my publicly released twenty-twenty-six budget request. And so, should the county move forward with that, we will be doing a much, much, much larger, much more in-depth holistic review with you all of the zoning ordinance to address a whole lot of issues and including a, a sign, a sign ordinance that is much more in line with contemporary practice and standards, because the core of our sign, sign ordinance is a nineteen-sixty-five document. Because the core of our sign ordinance is a 1965 document.
Got it.
I think we can go next. Okay, then we looked at commercial vehicle parking. So commercial vehicles are defined in the zoning ordinance essentially as vehicles that are greater than 12,001 pounds and/or can carry either eight or 12 passengers, depending on whether or not it is for pay. And this is one of the sections of the zoning ordinance that the county council requested the commission look into. Currently, the only regulation is in the miscellaneous section, and it states that no person shall park a commercial vehicle on any lot where the primary use is a single-family or multiple-family dwelling between the hours of 12:00 midnight and 6:00 a.m. every day. The department was primarily looking into these regulations to ensure they're consistent with the county traffic code. So the zoning ordinance regulates the use on individual parcels, and then the traffic code has sort of corresponding regulations, but with regards to, you know, county right-of-way. And what we found was that our regulation does match what they have, but we find it more appropriate to be in the off-street parking and loading requirements than in the miscellaneous requirements. So we are not proposing any change to the wording of this regulation, nor are we proposing any additional regulations, but we are proposing moving this regulation. We also note an additional recommendation is for the department to work with code enforcement and other county staff to conduct research at the county level on creating a strong enforcement process for how to, you know, prevent property owners from parking their commercial vehicles at their residence as they do not contribute to kind of a residential feel of a neighborhood. Residential streets aren't made to withstand that kind of traffic on a regular basis either. So that is, that's the only, it's kind of a minor recommendation is to just move the existing regulations. Any questions?
I do have a question, thank you. So when you say "commercial vehicle," that's vehicles 12,001 pounds or more, not necessarily a residential or a regular car or truck with a commercial logo on it?
That's correct. If you, if, excuse me, if it's like a normal sedan with the, you know, the logo on the side or a truck or a normal van, it probably wouldn't meet the definition of "commercial vehicle." It would probably still meet the definition of automobile or automotive and would not be subject to these regulations.
Okay, thank you.
I think you need to make that very clear because when you start getting, the code enforcement starts getting the phone calls, I'm sure they'll be calling about all different types of vans in a neighborhood with ladders on the top and such, you know, that they're going to consider is not commercial. So be prepared.
Yes, and we're not proposing any changes to the definition of "commercial vehicle." And our definition matches the traffic code definition as well, so we're all on the same base. I think we can go next. Okay, the next section we looked at was home occupations, which are permitted use in the NU, FPKP, and all our districts. I'm not going to read the whole definition to you, but I did want to call your attention to the phrase I have highlighted. So the definition states, "These endeavors shall not offer any services to the general public nor stock in trade or commodity on the premises." So Mary, if you want to go next. So that phrase "nor stock in trade or commodity" means that if you are, for example, an Etsy seller, you cannot keep your widgets on-site on your property. And what we found in our research is that our current regulations on home occupations are narrower than what a lot of other counties and what the state allows. And they're also not reflective of the types of businesses that county residents operate out of their homes, particularly with regard to keeping stock in, to stock in trade or commodity on the premises. It's very common for online retailers to keep things on their property. So at this time, we are recommending striking that phrase from the definition. This doesn't change the preceding sentence. So a property owner operating a home occupation still cannot have members of the public come to their site to receive goods or services, but they can keep product on their site. Thank you, Mary. So it would instead say, "These endeavors shall not offer any services to the general public on the premises." And then we're, thank you. And we're also recommending adding some additional regulations. First, there shall be no outdoor storage. There shall be no freestanding or wall signage. All employees shall reside on the premises, and any use meeting the definition of an e-commerce or delivery-only retail facility shall not constitute a home occupation. And then we are also recommending additional research on adopting a home occupation permit procedure, which is something that is common. And that's something that we're looking at as we move into, you know, additional holistic zoning ordinance updates.
So, so, go ahead. Oh, sorry. This maybe ties back to the previous question about commercial vehicles and home occupations. So many times, the home occupations use a vehicle that has signage on it that is not, does not qualify it as a commercial vehicle, but they're using it as their signage because they're leaving that vehicle for their home occupation in the driveway or in, you know, somewhere right, it kind of creates the signage. Is that something that maybe in the future is going to be a conversation about whether that's really creating the signage that isn't being allowed?
Honestly, that's not something we discussed. And that's something that, yes, I imagine we would have discussion about in the future, though.
And I can jump in that for that a little bit with you, Abby. Is that, yes, I concur with what Abby has said, is that we didn't address that specifically in our research. It does become an enforcement issue, and it does become that, striking that balance between property rights for the occupant and, you know, how it truly impacts the community. So in our current, in the current situation, that issue has not arisen to a level of a high level of concern in our residential districts having vehicles, a truck or a sedan that has a logo on it. If that issue arose to a higher, to a higher level, that may generate a regulatory response. But right now, I'm not seeing much of a concern from our residential districts that that is a big issue that's going on.
Thank you. And sorry, one other quick question. I think, if I'm remembering correctly, like, two years ago, something was passed at the state that did not allow a home occupation permit procedure. So it might just be worth checking?
You are, you are accurate. The state amended, I don't remember which, which section of state statute. The county has interpreted that as not being, that does not bind St. Louis County's unincorporated areas because we derive our zoning authority through our charter, which bypasses that statute. So the unincorporated areas of St. Louis County are not governed by that statute because we took a hard look at that when that, because I know our municipalities are subject to that. So we at the county took a hard look at what that legally means for our, how that would have impacted our home occupations at the time, and it was determined, and the county finds that, that that code change with the state does not impact our ability to regulate home occupations through our charter and our zoning authority.
Awesome. Thank you again.
Of course.
So my question is, so this is about home-based businesses. So, or people who work from home, maybe, maybe not home-based business, but also people who work from home. So only the resident can do work for the business in that residential location? Say it's a service business. Say it's a architecture firm, and it's home-based, and sometimes the architect needs someone to come to their house. They're doing work together, like a contract employee. Or does this ordinance prohibit that?
Yes, we are recommending that all employees shall reside on the premises with no off-site employees.
I mean, that's restrictive. I mean, okay.
It seems restrictive to me. I mean, I would just.
Yeah, that's restrictive.
I'm just going to say, well, what if you need an accountant to come in once a month, once a week to do your books?
Abby, would you explain the, for the, for the commission, what's the difference in here between what we, how, what now currently exists and what this, what this is? And also that, and commissioners, that this can be struck when, if it is the finding of the commission, that this can also be struck before it's sent to council. If, whatever, however the commission finds it would like to do this, we will, we will make sure that it is reflective of whatever decisions you make. But Abby, would you, you know, does this, is this a new requirement that would be put in? Or can you say a little bit more about that?
Oh. Already, the, the definition prohibits offering any services to the general public. So the definition currently, we would not consider it appropriate for a non-resident to be on the site. There's another. Oh, yes. So if you want to go back, Mary, to the slide with the definition. So the, the first sentence says, "A business, commercial, or professional endeavor operated as a domestic activity carried on solely by members of a family who reside on the premises." So that prohibition is already in the definition. We are essentially restating it and making it additionally explicit within the sections of the zoning ordinance.
Thank, and that's what I, that's what I was hoping you would, would, would get to, Abby, is that I, I remember that the, the current definition already states that.
So this, Todd, so what, what issue is this resolving? What problem is this solving?
The primary thing we were concerned about was this bolded phrase, "nor stock in trade or commodity on the premises," because it prohibits online retailers from keeping their product on-site, which we find is not, you know, from a code enforcement perspective, is not kind of realistic for us to enforce. There are a lot of issues with enforcing that requirement. And when we decided to look into it, we found that it is far more restrictive, excuse me, far more restrictive than what many other counties throughout the country allow for a home-based business.
So the intent is actually to liberalize this a little bit to allow a small business owner to carry some, some stock within their home. Say you, like, say you sell widgets on Etsy. Right now, technically, you should get an off-site, you know, like an off-site warehouse or an off-site e-retailer type of facility. But if you're really small, that doesn't make sense. So, and then that's why we also, Abby, correct me if I'm wrong, added in to make sure that if we are going to permit some limited stock to be, you know, stored in people's residential homes, that it's not spilling out into the, into view of residents. That's where the no outdoor storage prohibition is coming from, is to make sure that we're balancing the reality that we want our residential communities to remain residential in character and aesthetics while also liberalizing the regulations to allow the property owners to do more on their properties.
Well, the intent is to be a little bit more lenient towards home business owners, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Is this, is this something that, that's going to be looked at again with the new zoning next year, or is this not something?
A new rewrite to the zoning ordinance will essentially be a, all of these topics will be reviewed as part of that process to bring them into the newest, most contemporary standards.
I mean, I guess I would just ask that, that part of this regulation sort of be researched also to see if there are other counties that allow even one employee, you know, to work in the home for whatever reason that is. And I guess I'm sort of thinking you've got unincorporated St. Louis County, but then you have subdivisions with their own restrictions. If they want to be more restrictive, well, then they can be versus not allowing even one other person to. I mean, you're going to have up to eight students a day coming and going, but we're not going to allow one car in the driveway for someone who's going to come in and be an assistant to a business.
No, I hear, I hear that, and I think that's part of the tension or the balance in this and why it's so, getting the, striking the right balance on this is really important.
I could understand it's not the easiest thing to tie down because there's all these different uses.
Yes.
Yes, and that's the, that's the trick is the balance of dealing with service businesses versus these kinds of businesses that are trading commodities and selling. I mean, it's, it's different. It's, it's different. So that was a very good example that you brought up about a real estate agent and may need an accountant to come in, you know, bookkeeping and bring someone onto site. And so I don't know that we need to, I don't know. I don't know. I don't.
May I say something, please?
Yes.
On any residential neighborhood, I believe anywhere in the county, be it incorporated or, in, incorporated or unincorporated, especially if in a neighborhood has indentures. When somebody abuses what we're talking about, you know, one or two cars once in a while, but when somebody abuses their, their right to have some type of business, there's three or four cars there every day obstructing traffic, they're going to reach out to the county. If not, their own HOA trustees, and they'll ring that phone so hard on those trustees that they'll go down and do something about it. But normally, that doesn't happen. It's very rare that I think the county ever gets a call about what we're talking about right here, right now. It's, and what, what I'm reading right here now, they're trying to make it more lenient for people to do these businesses, so.
I will say anecdotally from my own experience is that you're correct, Mr. Taylor, in that we hear a lot less about people, about complaints about these and more about people needing, wanting to, us telling people when they, when they reach out to us, no, you can't actually use your property because we, because the code does not allow you to stock trade or commodity at your home. So that is, that is the thing that we are trying to address.
And Jacob and Keith both, I understand what you're saying, but when someone buys a property and they intend to have a specific use there, and then a year later, somebody comes back and says, no, you cannot have that use, you know, theoretical becomes actual.
Yes.
And now they bought a property that they can't use for what they really want to use it for. So, I mean, I'm just going to go back to what I already said, and I would just ask if we could look at that for any future when it comes back up again.
I, absolutely. And that's where you see, and Abby can speak more intelligently to it because she did the research, but that is where the balance comes in. Those local jurisdictions that do, because some jurisdictions do allow for very limited numbers of outsiders to come. It's a, it's a, it's really a range that you see out there when you start comparing other local governments' codes. But then that's where you start seeing those permit processes come into place. So those permit processes are then designed to help maintain the residential nature of the neighborhood, even if a property owner does have an outside staffer working there. Because it becomes that, then it does become that gray area between it turning into a commercial office, which by the way, this commission and, and property owners actually in our zoning ordinance do have a special business license that they can actually, it's a special procedure, very similar to CUP that does, that kind of also addresses this. So there's some other, there's different ways that these can all be tackled, and it's going to just depend on what is the regulatory framework that we as a community say that we want to have. Which I know that's really open-ended for a question in front of you tonight, which is, you know, our recommendation right now is to strike that nor stock in trade and commodity, add a couple lines about making sure that the, that the storage of those items do not become detrimental by not, by not allowing it outdoors. But then I hear the bigger picture piece of this, which is when a new zoning ordinance is discussed, how, what's the, what's the big picture question that, or big picture regulatory framework we want to do to protect our communities, but also give people those rights that they really should have to, to grow businesses? Because a lot of times those businesses really start at home, they're incubated at home, and then can, and grow to something bigger. So.
And realistically, a new zoning ordinance to go through the RP process and, and, and create it and get it adopted, that's, if it started today, it's two or three years.
It is a long process. That is one hundred percent. It is a
If it started today.
That's correct. It will be a very deliberative process. It will be a very iterative process, and it will be something that will require thinking about a whole lot of, a lot of things. So yes, it will be a, it will be a a long process.
Years.
Moving on.
Next, we looked at the legal non-conforming section of the zoning ordinance. So any use that had been operating in, prior to 1965, when the zoning ordinance was adopted, can be considered legal non-conforming if it had been operating continuously since that time. And kind of an issue that the department encounters, especially when it comes to reviewing permits for occupancy, is that the section of the zoning ordinance does not include the steps for establishing legal non-conforming status, which is something that we found was common in a lot of other zoning ordinances that we looked at. So what we are recommending is adding the language describing the procedure for establishing legal non-conforming status to this section of the zoning ordinance. And so that involves the property owner submitting three pieces of evidence showing the use or structure existed in its current state on the date of this zoning ordinance or any applicable amendment thereto became effective. And then we've listed the acceptable forms of evidence, which are real estate records showing when the building was built, and that it was built for the use the property owner is seeking to establish. Utility receipts addressed to the business or occupant from 1965 or prior. Signed and notarized affidavits from individuals familiar with the property who can attest the property has been used for the purpose the property is, owner is seeking to establish since 1965 or prior, and that there has not been a vacancy of more than six months of that use. And then RL Pulk verification of use at the subject address. If you're not familiar with RL Pulk, it's, it's sort of like the Yellow Pages. It's a, it's a directory book that has been published. And then we're also adding language stating that the burden of proof shall lie with the property owner. If there are no questions on that half of it, we can go to the second half.
I'm gonna say something. I'm gonna say something. Yikes. Who has receipts from 1965? Or how, how are these petitioners going to find someone who know, from 1965, who knew that? I mean, this is all kind of interesting. Where did you get these recommendations from? For the amendment?
And this is the, the process that the county has used for quite some time now. This is our established process, and, and we find it has been effective so far.
So people are bringing these kind of documents and evidence?
Yes, we've been able to establish legal non-conforming status for a number of properties.
So you guys are helping, the county staff is helping these property owners?
No, the property owner is providing this information.
Okay.
And we found that these, you know, acceptable forms of evidence were, you know, consistent with, when, when we researched other zoning ordinances, it, it's all pretty consistent.
I want to place, I want to also want to place some of this language in the, in the larger framework, which is that it is the goal of all zoning ordinances to over time remove non-conforming uses. So over time, as you get farther and farther away from the establishment of the zoning ordinance, you should be getting fewer and fewer legal non-conforming uses. So we are at this point, what, sixty years since 1965? So the number of legal non-conforming uses is, should be dwindling just over time naturally as a site should be brought into conformance with the contemporary standard as things change. So it is incumbent upon property owners to show, to have that evidence. Staff will help direct them where they can find evidence that we know where these sort of things exist. But it is incumbent upon a property owner to be able to establish the legal non-conforming use. Otherwise, their remedy is to bring the site into conformance with the ordinance, which is always the, the desired state of the zoning ordinance will always be to bring parcels from legal non-conforming into conforming. So procedures by which someone can do that, they can request to go through a zoning procedure. They can request to go through a special, through a special procedure, like a CUP procedure. And it's always the intent to try to get people to do that first before we get to the legal non-conforming uses, unless it is so straightforward and so clear that you can see that there's an, an unending thread between 1965 and today.
Jacob, I'll just say, I mean, we have run into this. It is not easy to do. In South County, there is a industrial areas that were zoned industrial. There are houses all around, you know, that industrial area that were in 1965 zoned industrial.
Right.
And now you try and sell a home that somebody decided it was a home in 1965, but for some reason they zoned it industrial. And now you need an affidavit from someone who says it's never been vacant for more than six months since 1965.
Right.
Yes. Yes, I hear, I hear that. And this is the, this is sort of the, the sort of philosophical tension between trying to bring properties into conformance and the difficulties that a property owner may encounter. Those, in, in these very specific cases, I am aware of, of a number of properties that in 1965, the, 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 the individuals who, when the county adopted the, the existing zoning map, they thought that the natural turn for that property was to become industrial. Well, it hasn't since, since that time. And it's, you know, it's a, it's an opportunity for the property owners to either, A, petition to change the zoning map to actually bring it in line with how the property is actually used. That is the, that is the way to do it. The other way to do it, and the county has the authority and the ability to to look at petitions and say, "This neighborhood, which was in 1965 zoned M1, but it was developed with nothing but our, with our uses. Perhaps we should initiate a county, look at it and say, the planning commission finds we should turn this neighborhood into residential." Now, what I'm gonna say is that there's all kinds of steps before you get there. So there's multiple levers to get to conformity, but the, the goal of the zoning ordinance, big picture, will always be to try to bring every property into conformance over time. So I, I know we're sort of, we're, we're living in the tension between each individual case versus the big picture ideal.
But, okay, so I, I'm for all of that. But you're talking about hundred thousand dollar homes with seniors who do not have the money or the wherewithal to initiate a zoning request for something that the county did to them. They didn't ask to be zoned resident, uh, industrial. They've always been a house. They've always lived there. And now they're supposed to go through, jumping through all these hoops to fix this. And to me, that's, that is not really what we should be doing. We should be supporting these people who have had to live by a factory their entire, you know, time in St. Louis County. But let me just ask, is it, is it imperative that there are three pieces of evidence? Is that, is that part of it? That's important?
That's our current procedure. If the commission would like us to consider, you know, would like us to amend that, that is up to the commission.
Now, yes, that's, you're correct, Abby. And Abby, did you look to, how does this compare to other jurisdictions process?
Um, many jurisdictions that I looked at require a separate zoning permit granted either by the planning commission or their version of the board of zoning adjustment, which would require, you know, a public hearing and some additional, those kind of zoning steps, and then submitting evidence like, like we do. But it's a different process.
And one thing is I, what I want to, because I kind of want to step back, because of what I also want to say is what staff experiences on the other side of this argument, which, of which we get individuals for, who are trying to establish legal non-conforming uses for a property, which are clearly and obviously not accurate. So it's the, the, that tension, that balance is for the, the cases of the single-family detached house that's zoned industrial. That is one side of a, that's sort of like one side of the spectrum, but we also get from the other side of the spectrum folks that try to not have to go through procedures to come into conformance and say, "Oh, it's always been this." Well, but you just saying so does not mean that you should be relieved, that you are relieved of their, of, that you have to demonstrate the truth of that. So when we, so when we're dealing with this, we're dealing with it from both sides of that issue.
Jacob, when I'm looking here, and it says the utility receipts addressed to the business occupant from 1965 or, or prior. So I can understand that they're not gonna have those. Most people wouldn't have those. Probably ninety-nine point nine-nine percent wouldn't have the utility bills back to 1965. But if they're, if they're paying their real estate taxes on that particular piece of property that you were considering it's industrial, well, I'm sure they're not paying that rate. They're paying a residential rate. Shouldn't that mean something at just in itself, their, their tax bill? Going back many years, because those records go back a long time in the county.
Yeah, those records go back a, a, a significant period of time. And I, one of the things I'm wondering whether, Abby, whether, whether what we should have put here was acceptable forms of evidence include but are not limited to. Because other things that we have done is that we have looked in the department trying to, despite the fact that this is, it is incumbent upon the property owner to demonstrate this, because otherwise we become a research, we become the researchers for property owners when we, you know, that we're not paying for, they're not paying for this service, that they could actually go out and pay people to conduct this type of work for them. So we try to be judicious about how we conduct this work. But we've also looked at historic aerials and compared historic aerials over time to make sure that something is still in, you know, still in compliance or, or still the same size that it was in 1965. Because one thing that is also true is that if you expand a use at any point, you, it's no longer legal non-conforming. So this is, as we, and that's why I keep saying, the farther we get back from 1965, the harder it really is for a property owner to demonstrate this. And that is, again, the, the intent of it. One of the intents of it.
So the, this intention to put it's really just, instead of it just being the internal procedure, it's to make it official. This is the
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's how we're gonna do it.
Now, but what I, what I want to say is that big picture, we're, we, and just to be really clear, sometimes we bang our heads against some of this stuff too, because you want to say it's clear on its face, but I have to apply the code dispassionately to all instances in front of us. And that if I, that if we don't apply it dispassionately, then we're opening up to, well, we're picking and choosing who do we, you know, who are we giving sort of special, sort of special favor to? And, and my stats and the staff, we, we just have to apply the code as written dispassionately to every request that comes in front of us. But we do bang our heads against it sometimes, think, is there a way that we can help these property owners? Because some of it, you do, like, especially those, those, those examples that you're bringing up, Ms. Hancock, about these, some of these older homes. It really, it's a head scratch. You're like, oh, why did they ever do that? There's another example that we were just looking at, it was a 1965 subdivision that was built in the C2. And it's gonna be, it's the same issue. Folks want to sell and, and they're gonna struggle because the site is zoned C2. So one of the things that we were, you know, looking at is, well, you know, are there cases where we need to amend the zoning map to, that's not just a house by house, but maybe there's ten houses that are strung together that it would be wise for the county to look at and say, "This is, is our district. It's been used." Excuse me, this is the industrial district, but it's been used residentially since 1965. There is no development pressure to change it. And in fact, our residents are struggling more to just sell and occupy these parcels as they're currently developed than the underlying zoning shows, and identify those places, and then ultimately change that zoning. Now, there's a, the procedure by which we would do so includes significant notification, going in front of the planning commission, taking it all to, to and taking it all to council. But there's procedures by which that can be accomplished. It just, it just takes a lot of time to get it, to get it through.
Jacob, how many do we, of these do we have a year?
Oh, Abby, how many files do we, how many non-conforming files do we have? Do you know off the top of your head?
Uh, several dozen, I would say, but we don't establish that many new non-conforming sites.
Yeah, at this point, yeah, a lot. And that's also what's, a lot of times we're dealing with the same site over and over again, frequently because the property owner doesn't want to go through the zoning process. So they try, even though we recommend, say, you know, you could bring it into conformance if you would do this, and we can help you, but we don't establish a lot of new ones, a hand, a handful a year.
All right. Thank you.
I think that just speaking from the residential real estate perspective, we're, now we're seeing appraisers reject properties. They, they can't go FHA because they're not zoned properly. And so we've got these lower income, you know, properties that we can't get FHA loans on because of the zoning. A zoning that they never asked for, that they've been residential the entire time, you know, the property's been used. They may have even just bought the property two, two years ago. They may have even just bought the property two, two years ago and it wasn't zoned residential then, but it went through. And now they can't sell.
Right. I have the, my first, my first answer to that is the zoning for those parcels, if they've existed since nineteen sixty five were discoverable. So that's my, that's my just very sort of black and white answer to that. But my more nuanced answer to that is that one thing I'm wondering, uh, Ms. Hancock is whether do you, if you, in your professional capacity, know some of these general areas? I'm wondering whether you could send us a list of like, hey, this are, these are some areas where we, where this has, this new issue has been popping up. And because I am personally interested in taking a look at that and perhaps doing some work here in the department to identify the neighborhoods where we, where we know that these are not truly in line with what's going on and what has happened in the community. And, uh, maybe there's a, maybe there's an appetite to amend the zoning, the zoning map if there are some of these neighborhoods that we know where this needs to happen. Now, I'm not saying the, the, I, because I can just, I can see a few in my head where this is a constant problem, these single family homes in these industrial areas. And so I'm wondering if.
That's all, that's all that I know about.
Yeah, which that would be helpful. If you, if you can send that to me and Mel, just as an information piece, I'd really actually appreciate it. And, um, that'd be great.
Jacob, one other thing on this, I'm sorry, but I interrupted you. Um, what is, why is there the limit for the six months? You know, if it has, if it's not been vacant for six months? Because again, I can see from a, like a senior goes to a nursing home, but the family doesn't sell the home. So now is it vacant or is it not vacant? And.
That's reflective of an existing, um, regulation in the section that says that, um, any site with legal non-conforming status shall not be vacant for more than six months. Or we consider that, um, abandonment of the legal non-conforming status and it technically loses that status.
Okay.
And that again is rooted in the bigger concept of bringing properties into conformance. And if you, the idea being is that if it, the site should match its underlying zoning and that if the site has been abandoned for a certain amount of time, the, 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 the idea being is that those parcels should then, the next owner or the next occupant should then bring it into conformance. That's sort of the, the sort of philosophy that, that undergirds that six month status. But the six month has been in the code since nineteen sixty five.
Okay.
Now, would, uh, would this be in line with, uh, what I read on page eighty nine, uh, of our packet? Under the, it says the department recommends forming a county task force led by the planning department. So you, Jacob, asking Sandy for, uh, what she knows is legal non-conforming. Is this part of this task force? Task? Are task force yet to be formed or?
So, um, I was going to touch on that a little bit, actually, in the next slide, um, is, and as the commissioners can probably tell, what we've identified is that legal non-conforming sites, um, can cause a lot of confusion. Um, and, and one of our additional recommendations is to conduct a, you know, form a task force that would identify areas of, um, you know, large swaths of legally non-conforming parcels. And discuss ways to bring those into conformance. Um, one of those, that also includes, um, discussing easier paths of zoning compliance for those types of sites where it was built as a house in nineteen sixty five. At some point, the county zoned it, something that doesn't match residential. However, it, it's existed as a house. So, yeah, that's, that's in our additional recommendations there. Um, the other thing I, I wanted to, um, discuss, um, is that this, this section of the ordinance states that illegal non-conforming use may not be enlarged or extended. However, the section doesn't explain what it means to enlarge or extend a legally non-conforming use, um, which creates confusion and difficulty for us in enforcing these regulations. So we did some research into, um, states, uh, into legal precedent for what can, is the, is considered as enlarging or extending a legally non-conforming use. And based on that research, we are recommending we add language clarifying what it means to enlarge or extend a legal non-conforming use to this section. That language would say establishment of any use that did not exist on the date legal non-conforming status was confirmed shall constitute an enlargement or expansion of a non-conforming use. And again, this regulation does not, um, prohibit anything that the zoning ordinance already did not prohibit. Um, it, it's just a clarification to make enforcement easier for us. Um, and then, as I mentioned, our additional recommendation is to conduct future research into easier paths of zoning compliance. Are there any other questions about, um, this section?
It seems like, it's not a question, just a comment, um, that some things are more urgent to address than waiting for a full zoning.
I really appreciate Jacob's offer to look at the.
Years from now.
Yeah, I, I, because I concur, um, with you, uh, Ms. Williams, that, that there may be some sites that, or there may be some, some issues that, you know, we don't want to wait until a new zoning ordinance and zoning map would, could, would theoretically be enacted in, you know, twenty twenty eight or twenty twenty nine, you know, I'm just coming up with it, but it is a couple of years to get, to get through that entire process. So I, I do hear that. So, um, and again, we've, I mean, we've noticed this. We know there are, we, we know of a couple of spots where this is a, a problem, where these, these houses are sort of strung together. Now, but what you may, what we also may find is that, that in that balance and that spectrum, there are actually some property owners that don't, it, it's always interesting when you start, when you start, you know, chatting with folks, there, people come out with different perspectives. So, um, you know, we will, I'm, but I, I'd like to take a look at this and see if there are a couple of ones that are just really makes sense to amend the zoning map to actually match the, 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 the built environment as it, as it's existed for decades at this point.
Jacob, when we get our new plan, are we going to create new legal non-conforming use properties?
Yes, that is, that is one hundred percent something that happens is that that's why every zoning ordinance, no matter what, always has some form of granting legal non-conforming status to properties. Because there will always be those properties that are in existence at the time that a new zoning ordinance or new ordinance of any type is adopted. And that does not preclude a property owner from continuing to operate and, and to enjoy the use of the property as they had it at the date of the adoption of that ordinance. But it does always mean that, um, future property owners will need to ensure that, um, they're either maintaining that non-conforming status or they bring the property in conformance. That's why this is a, this is a, an issue that will never, that will never go away. And it's not, it's one, every one hundred percent of jurisdictions across the country deal with legal non-conforming issues. It's a, it's incredibly common.
If there are no other questions at this time, we can move on to the next section. We're almost done. Okay. Next, we looked at, um, regulations regarding landscape escrows. So currently the planning commission has the ability to require escrow agreements for sites in planned districts or with special zoning procedures. So CUP or a PEU typically. Typically, the commission requires those property owners enter into an agreement with the county to guarantee the cost of required landscaping if the estimated cost of the plantings is greater than a thousand dollars. The department again did research and, um, is recommending adding the landscape escrows as a requirement in section one zero zero three, one, six, two, which is the landscaping section of the zoning ordinance. And so this would expand the requirement to include all new developments, not just development in planned districts or with special zoning procedures. Um, the, uh, reason we're recommending this is to capture those benefits for all development throughout unincorporated St. Louis County and ensure that the landscaping requirements in the zoning ordinance are adhered to. And, um, commercial and industrial sites, you know, non-residential sites are landscaped appropriately and the landscaping is maintained. So the recommended regulations we have written into, um, the report state that if the estimated cost of new landscaping indicated on the site development plan as required by this section exceeds ten thousand dollars as determined by a plant nursery, the developer shall furnish a two-year bond or escrow or other instrument sufficient in amount to guarantee the installation of said landscaping. That is a higher amount than what the commission typically requires in a planned district. Typically, the requirement is greater than a thousand dollars. We are proposing ten thousand dollars because we looked into the agreements we did in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. And we found that for sites that are either a complete redevelopment of a property or something brand new, greenfield development, typically those, those projects had an associated landscaping cost that was greater than ten thousand dollars. And that's the type of development that we're particularly interested in capturing with this requirement. A, a thousand dollars is, you know, covers the cost of just a couple of trees. And, and we think that if every site plan, every development in the county was required to, um, enter into a landscape escrow agreement, it might be a bit onerous. Um, but we do think it's appropriate to require it for those larger developments. So that's how we landed on that ten thousand dollar, um, amount. Um, and then the rest of the regulations here essentially describe the process for entering into this escrow agreement. So, um, it states that this monetary guarantee shall be provided prior to approval of the site development plan, which is reflective of our current process. And then the, the process of releasing landscaping funds shall be as follows. First, the developer shall provide a letter from a landscape professional stating the landscaping was installed in conformance with the approved plan and in a viable manner so that the plants will survive. Then the Department of Planning will inspect landscaping upon installation and release eighty percent of the funds upon passing inspection. The remaining twenty percent of the funds shall be held for one year after inspection to ensure the plants survive. The Department of Planning will re-inspect and release the remaining funds upon successful inspection. All right. If there are no questions, we can hop on to the next. The next section, um, is regarding telecommunication towers. So this section of the zoning ordinance was adopted in nineteen ninety seven and does not reflect the twenty fourteen Missouri Uniform Wireless Communication and Infrastructure Deployment Act. So we are recommending amendments to the section that bring it into conformance with state statute. So it's striking the regulations, um, to establish the co-use of telecommunication towers, um, striking regulations requiring review of towers permitted by a conditional use permit every five years and striking the regulation requiring a financial guarantee to ensure the removal of a tower no longer used or needed when the conditional use permit has been terminated. Any questions?
Yeah. So does that mean that we, we won't be hearing about these communication towers at our meeting?
No.
Have to come in front of us?
They would still, if a conditional use permit was required, they, they still would need to come in front of the commission. Currently, any, any, um, tower that is, was built using a conditional use permit, the commission is supposed to hear like a correspondence item every five years. Where they say, can we continue to use our telecommunication tower? And the commission would say yes or no. Um, but that is against the state statute. So that's what we're recommending we strike.
Thank you.
Okay. Shall we go to the penultimate one? Next, we looked at architectural review. So currently, um, this is only required for sites in planned districts or with special procedures when the commission writes that requirement into the site-specific ordinance. Or in the form-based development district, which is a, a zoning procedure that we have available to us. However, is, is not used in St. Louis County. So we looked at possibly adopting full architectural review required for all development throughout St. Louis County. Um, and essentially after kind of discussing internally and looking at other, um, zoning ordinances, we determined that it was a little bit larger of a project than we were prepared to take on at this time. Um, and something that we think would be more effective to consider with, um, a holistic zoning ordinance update. However, the commission typically requires the use of high-quality materials when they do require architectural review. So we found that it would be appropriate and beneficial to us and to developers if we define what that means. So the definition we're recommending is building materials that are both durable and intended to add to the aesthetic appeal of a structure, including but not limited to brick, stone, treated or textured concrete masonry units and wood. Smooth-faced or untreated concrete masonry units, tilt-up concrete panels and exterior insulation and finish systems shall not be considered high-quality materials. Do we have any questions?
So I'm reading this. Would you say a private system would not be, uh, considered a high-quality material?
Honestly, Keith, I would have to Google that and see what it is.
Okay, that, that would be a, uh, let's see what place, is there probably quite a few banks, other industries that have used that? It's a plaster.
I think it's also called EFS.
Yes, it is EFS.
Oh, okay. So we would, that would not meet our definition of high-quality material. But it doesn't necessarily mean it cannot be used. It depends on how, again, this would only be relevant to sites that are in planned districts or developed with a special zoning procedure, like a conditional use permit. And then what exactly the commission writes in the, the, um, attachment, see the conditions of development. So if they require, you know, if you require one hundred percent high-quality materials, they wouldn't be able to use that at all. But if you only require fifty percent, it could be used on a portion of the building.
So let me give you an example. EFS, for example, is used on Walgreens buildings. It looks like stucco, but it's really EFS, these panels that are applied at the front. So we see it all the time. Yeah.
Yes, and we're not saying, we're not recommending, sorry.
The cost is not economical. I mean, it's, it's, it's a higher cost.
Yeah, brand new Walgreens, I mean.
I'm just asking you to consider it, look. I'm just asking you to consider it, look into it a little more.
So. We're not recommending that the commission prohibit use of that kind of material. We're recommending that the commission define what. They mean when we we write in an ordinance or a conditional use permit. That only high-quality materials shall be used. So if the the commission would like to. Amend this language to include EFIS as a high-quality material, that's something, that's a change we can make.
Abby, when do we normally put, you know, we require high-quality materials versus? Not using that?
Yeah, so it sometimes, it depends on. If a petitioner provides preliminary architectural elevations. But to everyone's point. If the commission adopts this definition. We would have to be mindful of. Requiring one hundred percent high-quality materials and and whether or not that. Is the kind of visual environment that that you want to create. Because currently. It really just varies from from site to site of whether or not we require one hundred percent high-quality material. Or a lesser percentage.
Yeah, isn't it usually on 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 a new build, on on a high vis area? Where we, when we have the architectural review, we're asking them when they, when they come back in. For example, there's the Collision Center that's built on Manchester Road around Mason. And and that was. An old appliance store, Gattick, I believe it was, or Gattickers. And in that architectural review was they were, you know. Recommended to use high-quality materials and they brought that back and that's that's what they had there. But, you know, when when it comes to residential developers that come in. Very seldom is is that ever in there. It's usually on a, on a commercial area.
That's correct. You typically, the commission typically includes these in like the C eights and M threes. Not really so much M threes, but C eights is typically where the commission includes that that. That section in the recommended conditions for the ordinance to include architectural elevations. So. What staff does is, you know, we review those elevations as part of the site development plan. And if the ordinance requires a certain percentage of the facade to use high-quality materials. Right now, what we do is we use our best professional judgment. Based on the architectural elevations to say, well, this this. Individual is wanting to use X amount of each building type. So they they do lay out, you know, this is what the building type or the building facade will be clad in. So, you know, when using high-quality materials, it's really intended to be for those structures that. Are going to be where where aesthetics is really important. Where in creating an enduring facade is is critical to the to the quality of the development. And that's where the commission does have the purview and does make decisions and recommendations to require different percentages. There are some where in the past you have required one hundred percent high-quality materials. And there's somewhere to have said, you know, fifty percent high-quality materials, you know, and giving the applicant the ability to. To make cladding decisions based on that. And so what this is intended to do is to help give staff a little bit more understanding and sort of. A foundation to stand on when we review those architectural elevations. To for their compliance with high-quality materials.
Thanks, Jacob.
Yeah, of course. And because because just so that you know what happens is that then we review it, we send comments back and then they are, then I say argue and that that's a. They they say, well, we find that smooth-faced and untreated concrete masonry unit is a high-quality material. And so then we have this back and forth about what truly is a high-quality material. When I think most of the time what we're thinking is like, this is, this, this looks like brick or this looks like stone or it is real brick or it is real stone. Something that truly is enduring and high-quality for the structures that are put up in our jurisdiction. And that is where it will be incumbent upon staff and the commission to be. Making sure that when we do require high-quality materials, it truly is in line with with what we actually want and isn't just a. Something we say we want one hundred percent high-quality on everything because that's just not economically necessary or it's not feasible. And it's just not necessarily really required for every single development. It's really a. Everything in in these kinds of cases is some discretion on what is really going to be that balance for our community.
Alrighty. Abby, can we move on?
Yep. Okay, this is the last one. So the resolution included other items that may need clarification. And this C-two lot coverage limitation was one, it was the thing that kind of popped up. The C-two shopping district section of the zoning ordinance. States that no more than twenty-five percent of the total area of any lot or tract of land shall be covered by structures. This is the only district with a primary structure size limitation. And again, this is kind of a theme for enforcement purposes. It's something that can be sort of onerous to apply. And it is just not consistent with any of the other sections of the the zoning ordinance. So we are recommending striking the lot coverage requirement from this district. We find that the structure setbacks that exist already in the commercial district. Limit the size of development on these lots sufficiently. And so it's not necessary to have an additional lot coverage requirement. Any questions about this? One? Okay. Were there any, Mary, if you want to go next? Were there any remaining questions about any of the previous? Items? If not, our recommendation is for approval.
Hey, you've heard a recommendation of the Department for the approval of the. One thousand three zoning. Ordinance. And what's her pleasure? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions, concerns? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Eyes have it.
Aye.
Was that, was that you, Abra?
Perbetta.
So there's. Six, yes, and one, one no. And it passes with six to one. Next, we have. Old Business Letters for Approval. PC twenty-five dash twenty-five Madat Salamic.
Hello again, commissioners. You may recognize this from last month's meeting. This is PC twenty-five dash twenty-five Midhot Salamovic. We are bringing this back to you guys. We had a few Scrivener's errors. In the conditions letter when it was originally approved that we are correcting this time around. So as previously stated, this is PC twenty-five dash twenty-five Midhat Salamovic. The request is for an amended C eight for an indoor recreation complex located on three point seven eight acres. And is northwest of Lee May Ferry Road, southeast of Interstate fifty-five and approximately one hundred and fifty feet north of Longview Drive. As you can see to the right, this is an aerial of the site outlined in red as well as its location on the left in St. Louis County. To kind of go over what has transpired, the commissioner, the commission recommended approval of the request for the following conditions of development. A maximum square footage of twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet to match the existing building found on site. Setback requirements for the four cardinal directions of the site. Parking setback requirements following section one oh three, one, six, five, off-street parking and loading requirements of the zoning ordinance. And stormwater requirements to be met prior to SDP approval. On your September eleventh twenty, or sorry, on September eleventh, twenty twenty-five, the petitioner submitted a request for changes to the approved provisions. And requested that the square footage maximum for the building requirements be increased from twenty-two five hundred square feet to twenty-two six hundred. This was to account for some building square footage variation when they went out and measured the site. Request to change the setback directional requirements due to Scrivener's error on the original approved submission. Modification to parking setback requirements to utilize the existing parking lot layout from the previous tenant. And requesting changes to the format of the original site condition attachment in regard to the stormwater requirements. Due to Scrivener error, putting them across two different parts of the report. Because of this, we are recommending approval due to these just being very minor revisions.
Hey, you've heard the department's recommendation for approval of this. PC, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been a first and a second. Are there any questions in regards to this? PC. If there's no questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes?
Aye.
Ayes? Eyes have it, seven to zero. And next, we have correspondents.
So the first item is PC seventeen and eighteen dash twenty-two Our Ladies Inn. This was, you can go next. This was a request for a planned environment unit in the R five Residence District. And they are currently requesting an extension of time to complete substantial construction. This is a seven point three seven acre tract located on the north side of Big Bend Road at the corner of Longstone Lane. You can go to the next slide, Mary. Thank you. This site is in the kind of like western portion of mid-county and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. From this larger aerial, you can see some of the surrounding, uh, single-family residential development. No, you're good. I'm still seeing the aerial. Will you go next?
There might be a little bit of a lag.
Yeah. So sorry. For purposes of review, PC seventeen and eighteen dash twenty-two was a request for a change of zoning from the R two Residence District to the R five Residence District. And for a PEU in the R five to develop a group living facility. Specifically, it was the group living facility for Our Ladies Inn, which is serves young mothers. The request was passed via settlement agreement on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and a site development plan was recorded. On November fourth, twenty twenty-four, the settlement agreement states. That substantial construction must be complete within one year of the plan being recorded, which would be November fourth of this year. The developers currently requesting a six-month extension to complete substantial construction. As they are still finalizing the construction documents. You can go next.
It's on the next slide, sorry. I think there still is a lag.
Yeah, so we're recommending approval of this request. We note that an amended site development plan is currently under review by the Department of Planning. Showing primarily minor revisions to things like the signage, the outdoor recreation area. And the facades of the building. So this amendment will extend that deadline to May fourth, twenty twenty-six. And we also note that for the purposes of this project, substantial construction means. Final grading for roadways necessary for first-approved plat or phase of construction. And commencement of installation of sanitary storm sewers. So we find that this is a minor extension and appropriate at this time.
You've heard a recommendation of the Department for Approval. Do I have a motion for approval?
I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, there's been a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Eyes have it, seven to zero. And next, we have correspondents from PC twenty-nine dash twenty-four Flower and Fenler.
So PC twenty-nine dash twenty-four Flower and Fenler, Inc. is. PEU in the, I apologize, I don't know why that's not filled out. It's a. PEU in the R one and F P R one. And they are requesting amendments to ordinance, to the PEU ordinance. To remove the requirement to dedicate Lockmore Drive and the new internal subdivision street to St. Louis County. This is a thirty-four acre tract on the west side of Hillsborough Road and south of Paradise Lane. This site is located in West County and there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. From this larger aerial, you can see the kind of large lot, single-family residences surrounding the site. So for review, this was a request for a PEU in the R one and F P R one Residence District. To permit a single-family subdivision. The ordinance was adopted by county council in February of this year. And it requires that the improved portion of Lockmore Drive be dedicated to St. Louis County. And it also requires that the new subdivision street be dedicated to St. Louis County. So Lockmore Drive is currently privately owned and subject to an easement with. Which would require a vacation process to dedicate to St. Louis County. And the developer has. Proposed a plan to bring the existing bridge, which is part of Lockmore Drive. And is used to access additional residences in the area that would not be part of this proposed subdivision. So the developer has has worked to come up with a plan that would bring that bridge and the proposed road. Up to St. Louis County standards and to fund the continuous maintenance of the bridge and road. Which would not then require they vacate that existing easement. And and would allow for them to move forward with this development. So we are recommending approval of this request. As the developer has shown plans to bring the roadway and bridge up to the standards. And to fund the infrastructure maintenance. Noting that that vacation easement process may prevent timely development at the site.
Hey, you've heard the recommendation of the Department for Approval for this PC. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I need a motion, I'm I'm sorry, getting carried away. I need a motion for approval.
Moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any questions in regards to this project?
I mean, I give a question, is the, the plan to fund the infrastructure going to be done through like the homeowners' road maintenance fund?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have a question as well. Before the the county was going to take over that road and it was going to be required to have a sidewalk all the way down. Lockmore is, are they still intending to put that sidewalk in there? Because what I heard is supposed to be by a St. Louis County road. Requirements.
Aye.
The road will have to be built to county standard, including all the, the same as though it has to be constructed exactly the same way it would be constructed. it has to be constructed exactly the same way it would be constructed as though we were going to accept that roadway. So it will, it will have to be built fully to our standards, including the sidewalks.
Thank you. Any more questions? None, okay. Been a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes? Ayes have it, seven to zero. And I'd like to move for adjournment. Do I have a motion for adjournment? Nope.
We have one other item on the agenda, a second resolution, which, because I had the slides open, I added those slides, then Mary opened the slides. They're not saved. I think Mary is gonna see if she can pull them up.
Sorry about that, Abby. I didn't have it on my, I didn't have it on my agenda.
Oh. It may not have been on the version of the agenda we sent you, but it had been published on Friday. All right. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
We can.
Okay, great. You can advance to the next slide. Okay, so this is a resolution of intent to hold a public hearing to revert the undeveloped 4.24 acres of property currently located in the R1 one-acre Residence District and described in ordinance 13,390 to the NU non-urban district and FPNU non-urban district, the zoning district in which such property was located prior to the enactment of the ordinance, of ordinance 13,389. So what this is, you can go next if you'd like, Mary. So this is a portion of a PEU that was never platted. It was supposed to be developed, subdivided, and developed into additional single-family residences, and that didn't happen. But the, so the PEU section of the zoning ordinance states that when that plating doesn't take place, the PEU ordinance expires, and the planning commission shall consider, shall have a public hearing to consider reverting the zoning. So that is what this resolution would do, and we would place this particular petition, which is a site in North County, on the October public hearing agenda. So we're, yeah.
You've heard the recommendation of the department for this resolution. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions in regards to this piece of property? I do have, where is this in North County?
I apologize, I didn't include that information on the slide. It's on Old Jamestown Road.
Righty, thank you. Okay, with that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it. And now I'll move for adjournment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Ayes have it, seven to zero. And that concludes our meeting. We are adjourned until October 13 at 7:00 p.m. for our public hearing.
Have a nice evening, everybody.
Nice.
Take care.